Will the meeting please call the order?
Yeah, right answer.
Rebecca, will you please call the roll? Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay. If not, let's go to consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the January 27, 2020 council meeting. Approval of February 3, 2020 special payroll of 1,20805. Approval of February 7, 2020 payroll in the amount of 124,72817. Approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of 12,975. Approval of CoBank interim financing debt in the amount of 40,039.48. Approval of the December 2019 finance report. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Approving 2020 mobile home permits. Approval of liquor license for Fairfield Arts and Convention Center and American Inn. Approval of total claims in the amount of 390,491.73. One claim was over 75,000 to PKG Contracting, Inc. for 102,011.12.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved unanimously. We have no public appearances tonight. Resolution, action items, and ordinances. We have an action item. Consideration to set a public hearing on the max levy for Monday, February 24, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Next action item is consideration to authorize the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved. This has to do with the sewer revenue bonds. Entertainer motion.
Move, we consider authorization of the tax increment certificate.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Moved by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any more discussion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution, consideration of resolution authorizing the issuance of 11,142,000. Sewer revenue capital loan notes anticipation project notes, Series 2020A. Aaron, do you want to give any detail on this?
This is the approval of the interim financing. Obviously, once we go through the interim financing and we close out the project, then that'll become a USDA loan, which will become a 40-year note.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Ham?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen? Any other questions or discussion? Rebecca, please call the roll. Ham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was approved unanimously. Next, we have ordinance 1185. Division of Revenue is under the Section 403.19 Code of Iowa for Amendment Number 3. To the Highway 1 and Highway 34 bypass urban renewal plan. This is the second reading. Motion to move from second to third?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Approval of the second reading to the third reading proved unanimously. Ordinance 1184. Consideration of amending downtown parking restrictions. Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, or excuse me, moved by Anderson, second by Tohill.
Can we go over the policy that's attached to this, just so the public's somewhat aware of it?
It hasn't changed since last time.
No, but public meeting. It's a change. Oh, I'm sorry, the policy that was under...
Oh, it's not on yours.
Interesting.
Oh.
Ours is.
Yeah, we've got it.
So there's a policy attached to the document, being an internal policy. I know during all this discussion, there were questions asked, you know, who's going to make the decision, when the decision's going to be made. So we just spelled it out there as far as who's going to be making the decision. But probably most importantly is the last item that says where it's going to be published. And so that lists the people that are going to be notified through a press release when a snow emergency is declared. So just clarify, there was a set of questions on those fine-tuned things that's more internal rather than ordinance, so we thought we'd just put it in a policy. So you guys had it, and we had it.
I have a copy here. Does anybody need it?
I said, do we want to read it, that section, just for the public?
Where?
For record.
The where portion?
Yep, just that last paragraph.
Okay, the internal snow emergency policy, where? A snow emergency will be declared via a press release, which will be distributed to KMCD, the Southeast Iowa Union, Fairfield Media Center, Fairfield Chamber of Commerce, Fairfield Police Department, and Fairfield Community Schools. The emergency will also be posted on the city's Facebook page. If the emergency is declared during regular working hours, the emergency will be posted to the city's website.
Okay, any further questions? Moved by Anderson, second by Tohill. To approve. Ordinance 1184. Has to do with the downtown parking restrictions. This is the third and final reading. Please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Mayor's report. Committee and board appointments. I'd like to appoint Scott Willman to the Board of Adjustment. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passed unanimously. Next, I'd like to set a city council work session for February 24, 2020 at 6:00 PM for ethics and conflicts of interest training for the council. Entertain a motion to set a special...
Let me check the calendar. Good. How long would that last you there?
One hour. It's right before council.
Yeah. Just an hour. My understanding, this training hasn't been done for quite a while, so I thought it was always good for a review. Is there a motion?
So moved?
We don't need a motion for that, you're thinking?
We need a motion for that?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay.
We can just set it.
Okay. So we'll just set it. It's February 24, 2020 at 6:00 PM. City attorney report. Do you have anything, John? John has nothing. Committee and board reports. The Ways and Means Committee met on 2/6/2020. I believe the minutes are there. Paul, do you want to say anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We are, I think we're asking for a closed session this evening to discuss one of the items of the Ways and Means Report. So there are a couple other things you might want to mention at that point. I don't know if you want to have that at the end of the meeting, today's, tonight's meeting, or rather, go ahead now, but we're prepared to.
Yeah, go ahead with your other points, I think, because the closed session will be the last thing.
All right. So the minutes, we hope, are fairly clear. We had a number of participants in the Ways and Means Committee meeting, which was held last Thursday, February 6. We met from 6:30 to 9:10 PM. A long but productive meeting, we feel. There are several points mentioned. The first was, or several points of discussion, I should say. The first was, a citizen had asked the city to reconsider its mowing fee ordinance, or the ordinance that had to do with mowing and having to charge citizens who failed to mow their lawns according to code requirements. We had a thorough discussion on the issue. The discussion centered on fixed cost. Our city engineer provided a very detailed report on and detailing the costs that are involved in the city having to prepare itself and go out and mow a lawn, no matter what the area, or size of the lawn, or size of the area. And that report is a fix, is part of the minutes, which I commend council members to review and citizens if they're so interested. We also discussed, we had three other points of discussion, our three other points or items on the agenda. One was, had to do with the ambulance, which we had a quite, again, thorough and lively discussion about the current situation, where our contract with Midwest Ambulance expires the end of September 2020. It's a service that provides emergency and ambulance service for our citizens, for residents of Jefferson County. And the committee and the participants there discussed alternatives to renewing the contract with Midwest Ambulance, including, we reviewed submitted proposals for providing this service. There are additional suggestions and recommendations that we think are appropriate for a closed session, which we'll discuss later on this evening. We also have...
No, go ahead.
We also have, one of our items for that meeting was to discuss goals, organizational goals and goals for the committee. In the interest of time, we decided to table that dialogue until a later Ways and Means Committee meeting. Finally, we, the committee with input from the participants began, well, we did not complete a page-by-page review of the city's proposed 2021 budget and capital improvement plan. Our recommendations for these four points are, we've tabled the discussion on organization and goals to a later city council meeting. We voted unanimously, recommend to the committee, by unanimous vote of the committee, we recommend to the council that the council not modify or change the city's failure to mow mowing charge amount, primarily on the basis that the fixed cost of enforcing this ordinance is significant. Second, we recommend the city, we recommend by unanimous vote that the city go into closed sessions to consider our recommendation with regard to what to do when the ambulance contract we have currently expires. Third, we voted unanimously to table, as I say, the discussion on goals and organizational structure for the committee going forward. And fourth, we voted unanimously to continue our review of the city budget and capital improvement plan process. We're going to continue to our next meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, February 17 at 6:00 PM. Those are the notes from the meeting, the last week.
Great, thank you.
Can I make the motion to have the committee approve the minutes at this time?
Yes. So this vote will just be for this committee. So it's been moved by Flornoy. Can I get a second, either from Gandy or Anderson?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy.
What's the motion?
Pardon me?
What's the motion?
To approve the minutes.
To approve the Ways and Means minutes. So it'll just be the committee. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Okay, it's been approved by the Ways and Means Committee, the minutes of February 6 of 2020. Thank you. Economic Development Committee. Why don't we approve the minutes of 1/27/2021? So again, this will be just the Economic Development Committee of Hallie, Anderson, Tohill. The minutes are attached there. Did you want to say anything about those minutes?
No.
Okay.
Not quite sure what's going on, because the committee's subgroup of the council doesn't have any authority. We're just advisory, it's in our bylaws.
Well, what we're trying to do is get the minutes in the record officially.
Well, I email them out after I write them up.
Yeah. And so sometimes those aren't ever officially approved. So if I could get a motion to approve those minutes from your committee in a second, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Tohill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay. Economic Development Minutes from, Economic Development Committee minutes from January 27 of 2020 have been approved by the committee. And then you had another meeting on 2/10, correct?
Yeah, we had a meeting earlier this evening. One agenda item was the electric vehicle charging station grant application. We reviewed it. If you look at that link, you can see the initial estimate per unit, full cost would be 14,000. For the sake of making sure we cover all our bases, we may just include an extra 1,000 in contingencies, so we know that, because it's a payback grant, pays back the expense, we might as well make sure we got all our bases covered. So the total match would be $1,500, $1,500. And then the next, if you scroll down, Jason, I showed the two locations that are under consideration. So up is north. That first circle is the parking lot north of the Orpheum Theater. And the spot that's chosen is right at the base of the utility pole, so easy to tie into. Currently a handicap spot that may be able to move one over, or the charging station can move one over. Either way, it's a good spot for installing. After I met with Grant, I forget Grant's last name, from Alliant, we talked about. You want to be close to where they can tie it in, they're gonna, and Alliant's gonna install a meter at their own expense after the electrician provides the conduit. So that would be priority one. And then priority two would be the public parking lot adjacent to the public restroom building. And there are a couple of spaces that are more parallel parking. Again, the circled areas directly next to a utility pole, which would make installation much easier. So these are the two recommended location. Now, the grant wants you to do them separately and prioritize, so the top one would be priority one. That's the one we really want to win. And then the other one's secondary. We're okay not winning that one, but if we get it, we can choose at that time, after being, if we award, or awarded both of them, we can choose not to do one or the other or either, because it's not, they're not giving us money, they're paying us back after we've completed. So the committee recommends going ahead and applying for both. And then we'll make a decision after the results come back in July, if we want to install one or both. So that is the motion that I'm going to make, is to go ahead and apply for both of these grants.
I second it. So you're applying for two installations, two grants, but they're identical except for the numbers?
Except for the location. Yep.
Okay, great. It's been moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy.
Excuse me?
To approve these grant applications for two areas. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The Public Safety and Transportation Committee, we don't have the minutes yet, so we will skip that. Administrator report.
I'll wait. Other than working on the budget with Ways and Means, we've been working on the closed session topic, so I'll wait to give any more comment until then.
Okay, do you want, is Melanie going to, Melanie, you going to talk about the local road safety program?
I hate to even do this tonight. You guys are doing great on time. We were. We were, exactly. So I want to go over with you guys tonight, the local road safety plan. As Chris Shires would say, I'll keep it to an hour. I want to go over with you the local road safety plan. This is something that the staff has been working on for over a year with the DOT and their consultants. I did send you the whole document, and then even picked out just the important pages to attach to your agenda, and I decreased it even more to do a brief presentation for you guys tonight. The reason why you're seeing it tonight is because the consultant would like comments by Wednesday in order to finalize this document. Go ahead, Jason. And so the presentation was put together by the consultant, and I'll do my best to follow through the slides. Aaron, Chief Thomas, Michael Hallie, and Daryl were all part of the discussion, so you guys just speak up if I missed something. Go ahead, Jason. So what is a local road safety plan? It's a document that organizes proactive transportation-related safety improvements based off of the data. So to give you an example of the reactive versus what the local road safety plan, the example I have is reactive would be saying, the city of, the corner of City Hall's been hit five times, so we're going to put a bollard up there to protect it. That's a reactive approach. What the local road safety plan says is, it's common for buildings to get hit on the corners, so let's put up a bollard. And also, let's look to see if there's any other underlying factors that might cause that corner to get hit, such as, do we need to improve the lighting? Are people taking the corner too fast? And is there anything that we can do to improve those driver-related issues? So the local road safety plan covers both the structural or the engineering things, as well as the driver-related issues, which is why I like this, I like this plan. Go ahead, Jason. So it's not, the document's not a capital improvements plan. It doesn't get very specific, as you need to do this project first and this one second. But where it is a benefit is that it's all based off of a ton of statistical and technical information, and that can be used to apply for DOT funding. And it can also be used to coordinate with other entities, and in our case, Highway 1, because we do have so many intersections that are joint city-DOT jurisdiction. The picture up here is from the report of some improvements that could be made to Merrill and Highway 1, where Highway 1 makes a turn by the university. And so this already opens the discussion with DOT of how can we improve that intersection? Go ahead, Jason. So as I discussed, the plan looks at both the structural improvements, but then also focuses on other factors. Local road safety plan, go ahead. The local road safety plans have been done for counties for several years, and 18 months ago, the city applied to be part of a pilot program to develop these, the local road safety programs for cities. So Fairfield was one of the first seven cities selected to be part of this. And you could, as you can see, the darker counties are the ones that have these plans. And Jefferson County has done this plan for county roads. Go ahead. Here's the steps that were used in the local road safety plan. The DOT and their consultant did a lot of the work up front, and then staff, Chief Thomas, the state patrol, the school district, they were all there for a meeting to discuss countermeasures and, again, the driver-related statistics. Then we reviewed it, and they finalized things some more, and once we make our last set of comments, this document will be finalized. But they do encourage that we update it every five to 10 years, and hopefully, the DOT will continue with this program of doing these documents at no cost to city and county. Go ahead. So I did want to share some statistics with you, because unfortunately, one of the reasons why the city of Fairfield was chosen to be part of this was because our fatal and serious injury crash rates are so high. Our fatal and serious injury crash rates per 100 million vehicle miles traveled was 5.24. So then in relative terms, the state average for that same amount is 4.99, but for Iowa cities under 40,000, the average is 4.1, or 4.32. So we're an entire additional, you know, entire point higher than cities our size when it's related to fatal and serious injuries. The crashes that were looked at were from 2008 to 2017, and there were 928 reported crashes during that time. There are more crashes during that time, but crashes with a vehicle damage or a damage under 1,500 are not reported in the state system. So they would be in the local records, but not in the state system. Yes, Michael?
So note that she says crashes, not accidents. That's actually something that this report emphasized, is accidents is kind of a term that doesn't really describe what's going on. It's a kind of a...
It indicates that it couldn't be prevented, whereas crashes indicate that there's a fault.
Yeah, so they heavily want us to use the word crashes to bring this back to reality. These are preventable.
So hitting a deer wouldn't be included?
Actually, hitting a deer are the 24 other and unknown accidents that were included in this, but...
Inside-city limit.
Inside-city limits.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jason. Well, you know, if you're going too fast on a, down the D Street Hill, going over the speed limit, that might have contributed to hitting that deer that walked out in front of you.
They only go to the state if they get reported and they're over $1,500.
Correct. And the statistics that we have up here are the state-reported ones. So then this slide is the non-motorized vehicle crashes or vehicles versus pedestrians. It's hard to see, but what I wanted to point out is that about 2/3 of the accidents are bicycles, 2/3 of the crashes are bicycles versus vehicles, where 1/3 are pedestrian. However, to the point that we discussed in public safety, one of the goals that public safety made this year was to look at crosswalks and improve safety of crosswalks. So out of the pedestrian, pedestrian crashes, all of the pedestrian versus cars were in crosswalks. So that's a scary statistic. But, so those are the reasons why we were selected for this study, and hopefully, the study can help us improve those things through the public safety goals. Go ahead, Jason. As I said earlier, that, one of the things I love about the local road safety program is that it looks at the driver-related issues. These are six of the driver-related areas that the DOT is focusing on statewide. The chart shows the statewide averages, and in order of rank, the city is in line with the rest of the state, being that a majority of our driver-related issues are related to speed. And then young drivers and unprotected persons being the next two driver-related issues involved in crashes. So then on the recommendations, there were, the recommendations on the driver-related issues, as I mentioned, there were several different entities at this meeting, and so the document outlines which one of those driver-related issues could use more work and which ones have programs ongoing, so that may be something that the Public Safety Committee wants to look at that particular section, but no real action for the city at this time. Then the last part of the local road safety plan is the structural or the engineering recommendations. As part of the program, staff selected 11 intersections to be reviewed in more detail by the consultant, and they're shown on this slide. Of the 11 intersections, four were signalized intersections, four were unsignalized intersections along Burlington. And then we included Fillmore and Main, which was a major school-influenced intersection. And then we also included one trail crossing where the trail crosses Glasgow. And so then, what the report does is it looks at both short and long-term improvements to these intersections. Some of the short-term items are just as simple as raising the height of the sign to the, to the SUDOC's recommended height, and smaller things like that that can just be done through maintenance. But then they also talk about some more expensive items, such as adding street lighting, not stoplights, lighting to some of the intersections. The one that they particularly talked about was out by Walmart. That first intersection, as you come into town, there's not a street light over there. Didn't know it till, didn't recognize it till we were out there, and that street light indicates that you're now in town, and the driver's reaction is to naturally slow down as you're coming into town. So something as simple as a couple thousand dollar street light put up by Alliant will help that intersection. will help that intersection. Then there's also the longer-term, higher cost, um, these involve concrete, uh, redirecting lanes and things like that. Here's the breakdown of the costs, um, for the different intersections in the short and long term. What we'll be doing as staff after this is approved, or after this is completed, we'll work on adding these different things into our CIP slowly, but probably most importantly is that when we're doing improvements in the area, we're going to work these improvements in there. We can apply for safety funds to look at specific intersections, but we're more likely going to be able to do this is, when we're working on reconstructing Merrill, we're going to look at the sidewalks while we're doing that. That's one of the projects we have coming up. When we do improvements towards the industrial park road, we're going to be looking at that intersection as well. So we'll, we'll, um, continue to look at these over the next several years, um, and work the recommendations into our capital improvements plan. So unless there's any questions, um, that is a short version of a 145-page document.
One of the things I was interested in is, Melanie's a good grant writer, and she and I partnered up twice in wanting a couple of grants, wanted to put a sidewalk on Jefferson Avenue and wanted to do the pedestrian improvements that are going to happen at Burlington and 9th. And my thinking was, if we use the DOT's own recommendations to apply for one of their grants, how can they say no? So-
That's why I'm so good, is because I use their documents to write people in.
So I was very curious to see what they would recommend, and, and then we can apply for some of those grant funds as well.
Yeah, and I want to say the grant funds, it pays for 100% of the safety-related items. Um, so on 9th and Burlington, the only thing they're not paying for is the engineering that was used to put together the bid documents. They're paying for the curb ramps, the new, um, pedestrian push buttons, changing out the signal heads so that they're more reflective, all of that's being paid for by that DOT fund. Let me know, if you have any comments to the whole document, let me know in the next day, otherwise I'll be sending that off to the consultant for finalization. Thank you.
Melanie, can I ask for a hard copy before I leave tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Since I'm not saying for the closed session, I'll print it and put it in your box.
Are you going to talk about fireworks?
There's, there's been a, we, we need to make a decision as far as where we're going to hold fireworks this year. Um, the fairgrounds is requested and would like to hold them again. Uh, city staff, public safety, fire, and staff would recommend to agree with them to let them have it at, uh, the, uh, fairgrounds, but we wanted to have the council weigh in and give us a direction, or at least accept that recommendation for that.
It's a sense of the city that's a better loc- safer location than I believe the other location typically is, Waterworks Park, is that right?
Correct. The, uh, the, the positives with the, uh, fairgrounds is it's a lot easier to get traffic in and out, parking's better, seating's better. It, it, it's difficult, and it creates a lot of man-hours for the city, for our city employees on the holiday to get people in and out and around and parked and around Waterworks Park. So it's, it's, it's just a better facility and set up better to facilitate that, and since it becomes the county's fair, since it's the county fairgrounds, and the county ends up providing a few people to, uh, direct traffic there.
Thank you.
I would move that we do approve moving or keeping it at the fairgrounds.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy to have the fireworks 2020 at the fairgrounds. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll, or I mean, please. We don't need to call the roll on that one.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, approved unanimously. So we are going to go into closed session, so I would like to have a motion to go into closed session. Moved by Anderson?
What? Second.
Second by Toohill?
What?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.